I'd like to call to order the regular scheduled meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Monday, February 24th, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Okay, consent agenda. Approval of minutes of the regular council meeting, February 10th, 2014. Approval of minutes of the special meeting, February 15th, 2014. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Prevention Coalition, Open Space Commission. Correspondence received and filed, Town Council, Town of Charleston, Resolution to Support repeal of master level voting per Senate 2019. Michael Mark Jean, request town grant and easement in through, under, and over Roy Street for the installation of utilities and passage. Refer to the Planning Board, DPW Director, and Tax Assessor for recommendations. Doc Realty, 400 Main Road, DEM Notice of Violation, March 25th, scheduled for review and setting date for possible show cause hearings. Anything to be removed?
CA5, please.
CA5. Also remove CA1B. Okay, we'll begin with you, Mr. Pelletier.
I just wanted to understand this a little bit better, and maybe that's Andy. This DEM Notice of Violation, I guess I just don't quite understand. We have, I've never had to deal with this before, and so I'm just wondering what, maybe give me a two-sentence description of what the deal is, and then where, what the next steps of act, next steps of action.
Okay, well DEM has issued this Notice of Violation essentially for administrative failures to keep records.
Right.
And failures to have trained people with underground storage tanks. One of the key things about the records is you keep inventory controls, you keep controls, okay, we had 25,000 gallons going in, and we had 25,000 gallons going out. Because it's one of the ways that you detect leaks. If they have 25,000 gallons going in, and only 24,000 gallons going out, where did those thousands of gallons go, perhaps into the ground? So that's what DEM has accused.
Yep.
This operator of. The town also issues its own license for petroleum storage, subject to meeting all legal requirements. DEM provided them with 45 days to respond and comply, so that's why I was suggesting that we continue it to the March 25th meeting, to see if they've responded. If they haven't, at that point, I would suggest we schedule a show cause hearing where their town license shouldn't be revoked as well.
Okay, and what licenses current, because I feel like we just reviewed, wasn't this one of the licenses we postponed for this reason, or?
No.
Am I inventing? I made that up?
He has petroleum storage, I believe, in a Holiday. And we did send him a letter from the Clerk's office stating we were in receipt of this DEM violation, and that he should notify us as soon as it has been resolved.
Okay, great. Thanks very much.
Okay, CA1B, it's just to amend, there's a error in the date. It says Janu, it says January when it should say February. So I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda with CA5.
So moved.
After the ball of them?
Yeah.
And CA1 is amended.
CA1 is amended.
So moved.
Second.
And the rest of the consent agenda? So moved.
So.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, at this time I would entertain a motion to move item G2 to our next item.
Make a motion to move item G2 to our next item.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
At this time I'd like to welcome Father John Higginbotham, rector of Holy Trinity Church. Reverend?
I would just like to request from the Town Council permission to distribute ashes on Ash Wednesday morning at the entrance of Grinnell Beach from about 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. I have spoken with Chief Blakely about this, he referred me to Nancy Mello. The chief didn't have any objections, but he wanted me to, he felt it best if I came before you and asked.
Anything from the council?
Just, have we done this before?
Not, yeah, we've had services at.
The beach.
At the beach.
Yeah, I've seen that at the beach.
This is, I guess, going to distribute ashes and coffee.
Yeah, you get free coffee, but it's a great deal.
Coffee with a soda.
It's basically for commu, people who are working, it's, that's the rush hour, and it's for people who can't get to church on Ash Wednesday to start their Lent. It's just kind of a quick and easy way, they don't have to get out of their cars, they roll the window down, they put it on their foreheads, they pull up, they get across, and they're out of there.
Wow.
One-stop service.
Exactly.
All right, if there's nothing else in the council, I will entertain a motion.
What?
It just allows you to.
Okay.
The beach area, they took it to the Stonebridge gas station area too, and I told them at the time we did not.
We don't own that property.
Yes. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, I move that we approve the request from Holy Trinity Church to use the town property on Wednesday, March 5th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. at the entrance a.m., at the entrance to Grinnell Beach.
Second.
I have a motion on second, all those in favor? Thank you Reverend.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
One more thing, do you want to move this one?
No. Okay, open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Rosemary Bowles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Would you like to sit?
Oh.
If you'd like. Just bring the mics close to you, okay?
I would like to, again, thank you for letting us take a couple of moments to address you this evening. I am currently the President of the Tiverton Lions Club, and Dawn Cabral-Quimby next to me is our Vice President. This is a first annual. The Tiverton Lions Club is hosting a recognition night, and at this recognition night, we are honoring a police officer, a firefighter, and three educators of the year. And this will be Friday, March 28th, social at 6:00 p.m., 7:00 p.m. is dinner at Whites and Westport. The honorees are, for the Police Department Sergeant Daniel Raymond Jr., for the Fire Department EMT, Joseph Ferreira, I'm sorry, Joshua, and High School is William Phillips, Middle School is Christina Costa, and for the Ranger School is Susan Petracca. And what we would like to do this evening is extend that invitation, because this is a first recognition, and I, we really feel it's very powerful for the town. These people have been dedicated to doing all kinds of services for them, and we'd like to recognize them, and therefore extend, please, the invitation to council members and the ordinance here, if anybody would like to come, and help us to recognize the dedicated people we have in town. We do have, Nancy did approve, hanging up a poster, one of our posters, which is just a big version of our little ticket here, and if anybody wants to get tickets, they can get in touch with us, and/or, I didn't know if it's appropriate to leave a few tickets with Nancy, and you can get them through her. Is that a possibility?
I think that's up to the town clerk.
You can leave a few.
You don't mind? Thank you, I appreciate that. Just the ticket returns by March 12th, so we can get a head count for dinner, and each of the honorees will receive a plaque, and appropriate flowers, and so forth, and we just thought, we even have dinner piano music, so it will be a very wonderful evening, and please, please help us to celebrate and recognize the honorees in our town.
Sorry, could you just repeat the times again? I got, March 28th.
March 28th, it's a Friday night, social is 6 o'clock, come in and kind of mingle, social, and dinner is at 7:00 p.m.
At Whites.
At Whites of Westport. And the tickets are $20, $25 a person. This is not a fundraiser, it's just strictly a night to recognize our dedicated people in town.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if it's okay with the council, this is just a little brochure about the Tiverton Lions, and if I could just leave them, I don't know if you want to hear Nancy?
Nancy? Thank you.
You're welcome to join the line, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
Jeff Belli, Town Issues.
Thank you, Councilman, for allowing me to speak. I have come up here before and spoke before the council. I have a brief statement that I'd like to read, and I come before you again, very displeased that this town is being run, and the lack of leadership that is happening, which I would like.
You know, it doesn't really range, the same thing you said the last time.
There are different issues that I bring up tonight that are not brought up the other night. One so happened to be the new Tiverton Library. This issue needs to be brought in front of the Town Council and addressed before that building is completed.
Then I suggest you ask and put it on the agenda, because this tirade that goes on and on and on is just, it's just beyond belief.
It's interruption.
Well, the one thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, because it is on tonight's agenda, is our building official is not doing any inspections on this building. He's saying that he is not responsible to do the inspections, that he's relying on the engineers to do the inspections, when it's his job to do the inspections. I have been out to the site, and there are deficiencies, you know, as far as the National Electric Code is concerned, Article 250 dot 52a3, which is a violation of the NEC. I have spoken with Dave Financio, the town's electrical inspector, and he agrees with me on that issue, but it is not being addressed. And this issue needs to be done before the concrete is finished, because if it is not completed, and the building were to lose its neutral, everything in that building that requires 120 volts would end up burning up, and the run, the possibility of the whole building burning down. If you would like to hear the rest of my statement, that is one of the issues I am addressing tonight. It is not a reiteration of anything that I said at the last council meeting.
Then again, since it's such an important issue, I suggest that you put it on the agenda.
Let me just clarify something. You went to the library site.
Correct.
You walked around, you noticed a deficiency.
Yes.
You reported it to the town's electrical inspector, and what happened?
He informed me that there has been no electrical permit pulled on that site. I have also spoken with Mr. Gareth Eames before the issue, when I had first brought it in front of this council, he said he was looking into it, and that the deficiencies would be fixed, especially that one. I went back out to the site, the other issues were being addressed, but the electrical issue is, still has not been addressed, and he told me it has been.
I have a question.
I'm a little concerned at this methodology, is how we solve these problems.
Well, not only that, my question is, do you have a right to inspect?
Absolutely. As a town taxpayer, and somebody who is going to be eventually paying with my taxes on that building, and it being a municipal building, I think I have a right to look.
It's not a municipal building yet.
It's a building that they are wanting us to take over, and, you know, and pay for the maintenance of the building.
I think we have an issue regarding private people on private, on construction sites. Yeah, Mr. Belli also, I think you should follow Mr. Rodrick's suggestion, put it on the agenda so that we have someone from the library here. I'm listening to your issue, but I don't have anybody here to respond, so that if you put it on the agenda, and you're very specific in identifying what the issue is, at least we'll have somebody here able to answer the question. I'm not able to, I, I'm lucky if I can plug in the television set, so we need somebody in here who can actually respond to the issues that you're concerned about.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, I request a motion to change the order of the agenda, to move item G1.
I move. Oops, sorry.
B, and C.
I move that we take item G1A, B, and C, items G1A, B, and C out of order, and stick them after A6.
Second.
We have a motion on second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, interim town administrator.
Yes, in your packet you had a copy of the contract for a new town administrator, and that was made public for the three days, as required by the charter. And there were a few changes that we have made to it, and I gave you a redline copy this evening, which shows two particular areas. The applicant was in this evening, and looked at it, and didn't seem to have a problem, was satisfied with the way it is written here. So I would suggest that you take action on the contract, as is, and if there is anything that needs to be tweaked or handled, any little minor issues that you might handle as an amendment at a future time.
Okay, any discussion from the council?
Nancy, I just, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here on regarding the, the issue of not using a town vehicle, and all that stuff, or is that, is that enough granularity in terms of stipulating what is and is not covered by that $2,500?
We thought it was, and the applicant thought it was, but if you want to add anything, now's your time to amend it, if you choose to, and if you want to, maybe at a later time just amend it.
Yeah.
What were you considering adding to it? I mean, we had to go by our judgment.
Yeah, I don't know if it's whether, yeah, I don't know if it's whether part of the contract, or it's just additional, you know, just really clarifying, you know, if this person is using their own vehicle while on town business, but, you know, from an insurance perspective, who's covered? Or who's covered by?
We did explain that, and I also have a memo from.
From the trust.
The trust, I think I put it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At your place. And I will see that.
Behind the letter.
I will see that the applicant, if he's appointed this evening, receives a copy of that, but it was explained to him, and he was quite aware of the process.
Yeah, it's like a two-tier liability. They're, his own insurance will cover, and then our insurance would be the secondary.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, so the, okay, okay, thank you.
And since you've done A, B, and C moved up, before you vote, could we discuss 1B? Goals and objectives for the town administrator? Jim Beruda did email me today with some very good suggestions. I know it was placed on the agenda, it was requested to be placed on, but we thought we might need more time to go through them.
I was just gonna suggest.
But you might, I wanna at least pass out what Jim has, if you need more, what Jim has submitted, and then it might be a good basis to go forward. Do you have any other? And it would, would also give us time to.
Yeah, that's my favorite.
It would give us time to go over them, and if anybody else had any others.
Yeah, I would, I would like to do.
We'll put it on next week as well.
Yeah, put it on our next week's agenda, and then we can put them all together and be able to discuss them. Okay, so.
So B will be continued to next week?
Yes, B will be continued to next, our next meeting.
Which is?
Yeah, okay, we need a motion on the employment contract.
Can we, yeah, can we talk about that a little bit more, just briefly? I just wanted to clarify, which Bill just mentioned it, but this, upon reading this again, it is kind of open-ended, this reimbursement expense, do we have a, I think I know the answer to this question, but do we have a policy on what is reimbursable and what is not?
No.
Okay, I thought so.
Not that I know of.
Okay, so I just, I wanna make sure we understand what the scope of that account would be for, and it's a departure from what we've done in the past, which I think is, actually, I've been talking about this for a while, and I don't think, you know, the car is necessarily a good idea to be giving to town employees, but do we have an understanding of what that covers, what that would be used for in lieu of, kind of beforehand, we had a car, we had fuel, it was all kinda.
Well, it's for official use, so.
Yeah. I just filed an email to the council, and a response that I received from the applicant, and he suggested that it was going to be for mileage reimbursement.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Okay. It's not specified in the contract, and I'm just sensitive to what our expectations are for that account. The way I look at it is, it's an operational account, it's a budget line item that we reimburse for mileage, if he has to go to a conference, or has to go to a meeting at the State House, or has to go, that's what we all think this is for, right?
Yeah.
Okay, because initially it was discussed as a, an automobile allowance, which was, which is different than what we're talking about today.
Now, that's why we didn't put it as an allowance, as an automobile allowance.
Okay.
So it's just for official use only.
Figure it out as we go. It's kind of a group, because we haven't done this before.
Right, my understanding would be, he'll get to Town Hall in the morning, write down his mileage. At the end of the day, when he leaves to go home, he'll write down his mileage again. The mileage that he's driven around the town, whether it be nothing, or 30 miles, if he did a whole road tour with the DPW Director, or something like that, whatever it is that he's driving around there, is the official business, which is reimbursable, and the same thing in town, right? He goes to Providence for meetings, goes to Newport, to the Chamber of Commerce, wherever he's going on official business, he's reimbursed for his mileage. And because it's a reimbursement, rather than a lump sum or allowance payment, it's not gonna be taxable, it's just a reimbursement amount. And that's why also, since it includes gas, doesn't include the town car, came with the town gas, so.
Right.
That's my understanding of it.
I want to mention that the applicant actually suggested he would provide documentation of where he was, where he actually went, so like, Mr. Tite suggested.
We'll just host Channel 10.
Yeah. He showed up by his mileage now, if he drives somewhere, he actually going to log it, so he's actually providing more documentation than just mileage in, mileage out.
I think that's good, and I think that's, I just wanna make sure.
Let's make that clear, that that's actually happening.
Yeah.
Just mileage in, mileage out.
When you make an appointment, if you make an appointment this evening, you should make sure that's a clear point.
Right, and Nancy, do we have a copy to be signed?
I suppose if it becomes more complicated in future, we can amend.
We can amend it, yeah.
But I'm just, I know I am sensitive, this is kind of the first time we're trying this out, so.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, so, motion on the contract?
I would move, I'm sorry, did you? Go for it, all right. I move that we approve the town administrator contract, G1A, in our packet. Is there anything else? Do I need to?
As amended.
As amended.
Track changes.
With track changes, these redline changes.
Second.
We have a motion on second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Now.
I make a motion to.
A motion to continue item B?
Make a motion to continue G1B until the next town council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion on second, all those in favor? Did you vote, Brett?
Hmm?
Did you vote?
I did.
Oh, okay. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, and last, a motion on the appointment of a town administrator.
I move, go ahead.
I just, you know, I just have a question about when you're gonna make it effective. Immediately?
Tuesday.
Or the end, or the end of the meeting, or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I know, I think we're gonna put him up here to join us, but just for technicalities of, I noticed the next item is interim administrator, how we're doing it.
Effective 8 a.m., Tuesday.
But he can join us.
He can join us as a.
Okay. Well, I move that we appoint, is, we're appointing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna pronounce it wrong.
Matthew Wojcick.
Matthew Wojcick, sorry. As the town administrator, effective Tuesday, February 25th, at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Second.
We have a motion on second, any discussion?
To our employment contract.
I'm very glad that he's here, and I hope he's ready to get busy to work.
To jump right in.
We're very happy, for those who don't know, it was a unanimous vote by this council to offer Mr. Wojcick this position, so we have a motion on second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Wojcick, please come up, we'd like to invite you up and welcome you to Tiverton.
Come to your seat.
No more questions.
Actually, you can join us.
This is your seat, if you'd like.
All the way up there.
Yeah.
You can join us as a guest, and would you like to say a few words, and introduce your lovely family?
I'll do that from here.
Okay.
My wife Christie is here with my son Arden, who is 11.
Who's Dan?
It's a, it's a privilege to be here, I appreciate the offer, was happy to accept, and for those of you, you've gotten to know me through the interview process, many people have not. I started off my work life with John Chaffee, who taught me that public service is an honor, that you serve at the pleasure of the public, for the good of the public, and for the good of the community. And I try to get up every day, when I was sitting at my desk, Senator Chaffee used to walk by, he had to get by me to get to his office, and he would say, "Matt, what have you done for the nation today?" And I was tongue-tied more often than not, but his simple purpose in asking that question was to make sure that everybody on his staff knew the seriousness of the business that we were undertaking at every level of government. And just a discussion about the car, just so, to be clear, I do things differently. I don't want to cost the town any more money than it needs to spend, and to me, I need a car for myself, I need to drive around for myself. The only thing I should be reimbursed for are those very specific instances when I am on official business, and nothing else. Create no risk for the town, create no expense for the town. And in those small things, I hope to send a message that that's the way I intend to conduct myself in the office, so I appreciate the opportunity, and I guess I will avail myself of the saint.
Okay, back to business. Public hearings and public presentations, Brian James, Open Space Commission's annual report.
Welcome.
Thank you, we're happy to submit our annual report of activities for the Tiverton Open Space Commission. Those activities fall generally in three areas, stewardship of existing open space properties, education and outreach activities, and pursuit of grants and opportunities. of grants, and opportunities to either protect additional open space or to enhance the properties that are already under our control. In the past year, in particular, I'll just quickly go through the, the major areas that we, that we work on. The Fort Barton and Fort Barton Woods, we did ongoing maintenance. There's 15 ridges and stairways in the woods, so they are always in need of some repairs, and that was continuing. Also published a new flyer. The previous one had been done in the '70s, so it was time to update that. And then, the rest of the activities surrounded the Highland, what is known as Highland Woods, that the Tibbeton Land Trust acquired. And under a memorandum of agreement, we're taking the stewardship management day-to-day activities for that property. And so that process is just beginning. It actually began when the land trust demolished the existing cabin that was on the property. And then we had a grant from Rhode Island Foundation to start to develop a master plan for that, and that is happening. We're just now starting to develop some additional trails in there, and to connect them into Fort Barton and Fort Barton Woods. In Whedomowoods, of note, is the continuing restoration of the meadow in that area, and the clearing of rush that had encroached on that field along the stone walls, and opening that up. And as well, DPW helped us out to expand the parking area. I don't know if you get down there on weekends, but it's often absolutely jammed, and they're parking across the street as well. So that's well-used. In the Pecassett Ridge Conservation Area, we completed a, a management plan, and the properties in that area are held not only by Tibbeton, but by the Nature Conservancy, by DEM, and the Land Trust. So it's a, it's a combination of groups that control the area, and we wanted to have one management plan for that area. We also completed a management plan for High Hill Point, the small parcel of open space down at the end of High Hill Road, and that was submitted to CRMC, and they've signed off on that now, and so we're able to start being a little more active in the management of that. And first task is to try and control some of the invasive plants that were taking over that area. And on the grant front, we secured two grants this year. One for a little over $200,000 to help with the acquisition of the Seaside Gas Property. And we also submitted, and were awarded a grant for $100,000 through the Trails Grant Program at DEM. And that was for additional property acquisition in the Pecassett Ridge area. In education, there was public lectures with the Historical Society, there was a number of groups that came through. The high school brought sociology class through, Girl Scouts, Fort Barton Elementary School, New England Wildflower Society, all came and toured various open space areas. And then finally, administratively, we were, we have developed a spreadsheet program, I know that'll make our town clerk happy, to list all of our properties.
Yes.
She's been asking for years. And we're in the process of getting that data into that program and trying to organize that, so that we have an accurate record of, of what we have. And I would like to just call out from the report, I mean, we have, we rely on lots of volunteers to help us out throughout the year. But there's a few that are out there, if not every day, certainly every week, are always available for us, and have stepped up to help in different ways. And that's Dana Summer, Sumner, Mo Fiola, Mary Sexton, and the students at Tibbeton High, who are using their community service opportunities to help us out, and Carl Dumas as well. And those folks regularly are out helping keep an eye on the areas and keeping in good shape. That's it?
Well, thank you. Again, you and your committee do absolutely wonderful work, and this town is better for it. I mean, the open space that you've garnered for this town has just been terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go into being a Board of Licensing, I want to take a brief, five-minute recess. Okay, the town council, sitting as a Board of Licensing, advertised public hearing. Foodworth Incorporated, 70 Show Street, requests approval of transfer of a BV liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Yes.
And we also have an objection letter to issuance of the license from Paul J. Pisano, Esquire. Is Bernadette Almida here?
I am.
Hi, have a seat.
Is that the lawyer?
No, that's the person. Okay, how are you?
Nervous.
That's all right.
Okay, why don't you tell us a little bit about what your plans are in the business for, at the Atlantic Sports Pub?
Actually, Atlantic Sports Bar and Restaurant. We want to bring it up another level in the restaurant area.
Tell us a little bit about it, what kind of food you're going to serve?
Oh, I have the menu. There's a little bit of fine dining, paninis, does, I can bring it up too short, too?
We have.
We have it, yeah. But they out there don't know, so if you just give them an idea of...
Seafood.
Uh, seafood. There'll be a little bit of everything on the menu. Chicken, seafood, steak, soup, paninis, salads, a little bit of appetizers.
Great, okay. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself? How you got into the restaurant business? So why you want to be in the restaurant business?
I actually have been in the bread business. I worked for a while my birthday. And I've been there for 26 years. And I have a great chef that's coming on board, and it's just something I kind of decided to do.
Great. Okay, any questions from the council?
Just a couple. Is the, I know this is a transfer, so I'm assuming the layout is pretty much going to stay the same, or?
Yes.
Okay. And it's a, it's a transfer of the, I just answered my own question. Wait a second. Oh, it's in two places, I'm sorry. Oh, so it's the liquor license, the entertainment license, and the victory license?
Yes, but just the liquor license gets advertised.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Well, then I answered my own question. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, a question and some answers, hopefully from the town solicitor. As you know, there's a letter from attorney Paul J. Pisano, objection to the transfer of the license, because there is money owed by Atlantic Sports Pub Incorporated.
Okay, I thought that was all taken personally. Actually, Brian is here with dealer now.
Okay.
How you doing? My name is Brian Dupree. I own the Atlantic Sports Pub. And I have whoever, whoever said that I owe money, the only thing I ever owed was the last month's, you know, when the truck comes in. So I had to go to every single retailer that I use, and I got a letter from them. So whoever, Paul Esquire, or whoever it is, could you tell me?
Paul Pisano or Pisano?
From what company?
He just indicates that there are two Rhode Island distributing...
Who's distributing right here?
And Horizon Beverage.
And Horizon Beverage Company.
Yeah, they're right here. Let's see, where do I stand then?
This is not unusual in liquor license transfers, and generally, this attorney will send me a release of it that they've made.
They told me they would.
Sometimes it's the last payment, the last...
You can grant it, subject to...
Subject to meeting all legal requirements, yep.
Is Rhode Island distributing right here?
You give those to the town clerk?
Nancy, and Horizon.
Thank you.
The only thing I ever owed was the last truck shipment. I mean, that gets paid, you know?
Do you need those back? Or do you have copies?
No, I don't need them back. I mean, they're all, I know it's all paid. They did tell me they would release anything that was there. I was surprised he didn't add anything on it, considering I don't owe, I pay by the week.
Okay. Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the request for transfer of a BV class liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, from Atlantic Sports Pub and Restaurant to Foodworth Inc., doing business as Atlantic Sports.
Before you go forward on that, did you call for the public yet?
Oh, no, anyone from the public, sorry. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Final time, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
We've got two more. Stay a minute, we've got the victory.
We have the victory, yep.
And a...
Non-advertised licenses. Foodworth Incorporated, 70 Show Street, requests approval of transfer of entertainment license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
I move that we grant the approval of the transfer of a entertainment license and a victory license to Foodworth Inc., 70 Show Street, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion on second. Any further discussion?
On individually, or?
Yeah, no, well, actually, I just, I have a question on the entertainment license. So I was going to suggest separate motions.
Well, sorry.
But I just was just concerned about what type of entertainment there is. Is this including amplification?
Same that's there now.
Which is?
A band on, on a Saturday night. Maybe not every Saturday night.
If I recall, I, I believe that the license was not amplified, if I recall.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm, that's why I was concerned with that. I also wanted to make sure that it complied with the, as far as that the, the electrical switches there are tied in, that the band plugs into are tied into the fire system, so that when the alarms go off, the power is killed at the...
Everything is tied in. It's been inspected. I paid, I've got the bill, $750, it ties in where the band would play. It shuts off with the, you know, smoke detectors, those outlets shut off, that whole wall shuts right off, where they would play. And they, we have karaoke there on Wednesday. It's been like that for three years.
Chief?
Mr. Dupree is absolutely right. They did install that earlier this year as a cutoff to the band through the fire alarm system.
Thank you. And I would like clarification on...
Yeah, I mean, at the moment, this is a transfer of license, so whatever restrictions there were on the entertainment license previously will carry forward. And I'm not sure that we have that...
I don't remember.
Can we, want to take a vote on the victory license in the meantime?
I don't think, I don't remember that being the case, because I do remember hearing something about, you know, karaoke, but I'm getting old, so maybe I don't remember.
Want to do the motion on the victory license?
All right, I'll, I'll retract my motion.
May I state your motion, Mr. Palatier?
All you had to do was make sure the fire alarm was shut off like I did.
Yeah, I move that we request the transfer of the victory license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, to Foodworth Inc., 70 Show Street.
Second.
We have a motion second on item 2B, request for a victory license. All those in favor? Motion carries. And we're just waiting for clarification on the entertainment license, just for our own notification.
And just so you know, what's, if there are any restrictions, they're outlined. We don't put that on the license, huh?
Okay, well, can you just sit tight a while? We'll go on to the next item. Okay, non-advertised licenses. W Walsh Company Incorporated, 32 Walton Street, Attleboro, Mass. Requests approval of street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. W Walsh Company serves the same purpose in Bristol and Attleboro. I've called both communities, and they're doing a good job, so I recommend the approval of the street excavators license for W Walsh Company.
This isn't the company that did the previous work on Leepers Road, is it?
On Leepers? That would have been, no, that was a different company.
Different company, okay.
That would have been for the water company anyhow, yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we request the approval of the street excavator license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, for W Walsh Company of 32 Walton Street, Attleboro, Mass.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
While they're still looking, we'll continue with Milk and Honey Kitchen LLC, doing business as Milk and Honey, 3838 Main Road. Request approval, holiday license continued from 221014, subject to meeting all legal requirements. We have a solicitor's opinion. Mr. Tights?
Yes, Mr. President. I had asked that you continue this from the last one, because I had some questions about the legal use of the property. And as provided to you in C4A, I've provided memorandum. The town has issued several permits, certificates of occupancy, and zoning certificates over the years, and therefore, I, I withdraw any concerns that I might have had as far as the legal use. I do think it is legal for the use that's currently there. As noted, I'm not necessarily agreeing with the interpretation of the owner as to why it's legal, and I don't believe it can be expanded without further relief, but as to that current use, it is definitely legal.
Okay.
So I have no objection to this.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we request, I'm sorry. Move that we approve the holiday license for Milk and Honey Kitchen LLC, doing business as Milk and Honey at 3838 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion on second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, will we set?
Mr. President, the license only stipulates that it's indoor-only in the location specified on the plan, so it would, it would carry the same restriction, okay?
Okay, then going back to item 2A, I will request a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer of entertainment license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, to Foodworth Inc., 70 Show Street.
Second.
We have a motion on second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I would like to invite everyone to come up.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on non-advertised licenses. Step-by-step mart, 429 Main Road. Renewal of annual licenses. Request continuance of licenses, subject to meeting payment agreement. DPW director recommended, recommendation attached.
Thank you again, Mr. President. If you remember, about three months ago, we put an extension, or you did, you put an extension on their license request, and I believe it was for a couple of licensed victory and, I believe, cigarette sales, because of past money owed through the pay-as-you-throw program. They met those three-month requirements of paying $500 a month, and currently, they are, they owe about, they owe $3,000. So we can extend their license as far as you see fit. But right now, their license has reached their extended date of three months, and they met those requirements in those three months of making three monthly payments, so...
So what do they owe now, did you say?
Beg your pardon?
What do they owe now?
They owe $3,000.
They still do.
And they plan on paying $500 a month for the next six months, bring that up, up. But we have to extend the license either for that six months, or shorter, or for the full year, or whatever, whatever you choose. I really don't have a recommendation for that.
Well, I, I would entertain a motion that we only grant them three months, and see if the payments continue.
That's great. Fantastic.
I have a question. This memo says that they owe 25. Now they owe 3?
The memo actually comes from Mr. Belucci, probably just...
He rounded up.
It says he made three payments, and the balance is 2,500 on your memo.
On my memory. I checked today with waste zero.
It's 3.
To verify that, and it's $3,000.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Yeah.
Aye.
So did it go up another $500?
They go, payback?
No, they paid three months at 500, they owe 40.
They paid three months at 500.
So, so is the memo wrong, then?
Yeah, right, they did that from 4,500 to $3,000. So that right now is $3,000.
And they're not a vendor for bags anymore, right?
Uh, no, no, they're not. No, they were shut off way, way back.
Yes, that lasted.
Okay.
I move that we continue the licenses for Step-by-step mart, 429 Main Road, for a period of three months, subject to meeting all payment agreements with the DPW and the town of Tiverton.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments and resignations. Lizbeth Cutrell requests appointment to Conservation Commission, three-year term expiring 4/15/2017. Is Lizbeth here?
She's in the hubble over.
Take your time, Lizbeth. Why don't you have a seat, Lizbeth?
Sitting too long.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay, I'm basically six-generation in this town, and I am at the point where I see my kids have all left town, and nieces and nephews have all left town, so we're breaking a chain. And my family has never gotten into politics before, they have always avoided it, and leave it to me to be the one to do it. I have been sitting here, listening to different things going on with our water. I have well water, quite a few, quite a bit of the town has well water, and if anything happens to this, we're done. And this is something that is vitally important to the town, and needs to be addressed constantly. And this needs to be protected.
Any questions from the council?
No, I would just, I would thank you for rolling up your sleeves and getting involved. This is, the Conservation Commission is a really great group.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they'll welcome your participation.
Okay, thank you. They sought me out, so I'll step up.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Elizabeth Cutrell to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you for stepping up.
I believe they're first.
No pun intended, Lizbeth.
That's a good one.
Okay. Unfinished business, none. Financial business, one. Request transfer of funds. Interim town administrator?
Yes, I tried to put, and I listed them separately, just so you'd see the from and to accounts. I tried to put, clear some of the accounts that we had shortages on. There is still funds available to transfer, but I felt the new town administrator might want to get a handle on some and recommend his own transfers. But at this point, the DPW was in the red, and some of these accounts, we were running, knowing that we were going to need the transfer, so I thought whatever I had hands-on, I would try to clear some of it up. So the first one, DPW has informed me that he is, was out of money with the sand and salt, so I'm recommending that we transfer from the insurance account to the sand and salt account, $30,000. That doesn't leave as much salt left, though, does it?
Well, that, that will cover, we had ordered eight loads of salt, received three, so we still have five on order. That'll be $11,000 when that comes, and we'll be able to welcome it, if we can even get it. And so, out of that 30, 11, we have to set aside, because it's already ordered, and we need more, so, and who knows how the winter's going to go.
Let's hope it's almost over.
Yeah, Steve, are we using sand, sometimes just sand?
No, we haven't done that yet.
Do we still have a mix?
Yeah. At one time, we had to go out and purchase a sand-salt mix, that we really never did before. Ended up, we paid double for the cost for us to make it, but we couldn't buy the salt to make it, so we had to, and it wasn't even as good as we make, so we paid double for something that wasn't as good as we can make, for half the price. But we had to buy it, we're stuck, but we have not, we've always salted and sanded the roads, so we haven't missed a beat yet. And we got two, probably two storms in the shed. So that's where we're at.
And any idea when the next shipment might arrive?
No idea. March. Just in time when we get our new plow truck in, for summer. We'll put it all in the shed, because winter will be over.
But if the rest of the salt comes in, you do have to take it, and we will.
Yeah, we, oh, we're going to grab it, for sure. Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. On request number one, A and B, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the transfer of funds from account number 21905268, to account numbers 55406698, 55406451, to cover the sand and salt and DPW contract service private plow deficits.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Can we just, one second. This is coming from an insurance account, which we have flexibility in because of what?
Denise has done that account spreadsheet, that account out, and there is some monies, I believe it's probably from savings of HSA.
Okay.
And so we have some money in there, and to find the bulk money. I mean, there's still a lot to cover, but these were the key ones that we've already ordered and already have, and...
Okay.
But yes, we've allowed enough to carry us through the June payment, plus a small amount over.
Good. Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Tights?
I was just volunteering to take the next one.
Oh, okay.
You know if you wanted to read it out first, or?
Yeah. Request council approval of transfer of funds from account 21905268 Insurance, to account 11207980. Town administrator unbudgeted items, $12,500 for Giroux Industrial Park, and from account 2190-5268 Insurance, to treasurer's accrual account, $16,500 for the Connet River Bridge toll litigation.
Regarding these, to the first one, as you recall, we actually dealt with the payment of the $12,500 in December, just for people's recollection, and the people who weren't here. This goes back about a dozen years ago, when the industrial park was being marketed initially by the council long ago, and Giroux was a realtor, and he had apparently secured some prospective buyers. The town council at that time walked away from a couple of the contracts when they had a deal to try to sell the park as a whole. As part of a later settlement, freeing up the park completely about five years ago, the settlement with Giroux was, it was a payment at the time, and also a note that he would get paid either in five years, or when the first lot was sold. 10 years? No, I think it was five years from the settlement. So in any case, the note came due, we haven't yet sold any lots, so that's where that money is going to on that. It was $10,000 principal, and the $2,500 was the simple interest. Item B is for the Connet River Bridge toll litigation, specifically regarding the services for experts with traffic studies, and the consultants in Washington, including the former head of the Federal Highway Administration. And you had in one of your previous things in the fall, we provided you with their expert report that was filed to the court, with the town's motions, along with the town of Tiverton and the town of Bristol. And just to remind you, you actually had allocated, I think up to a total of $38,000 for those. So there's still more that we need to come up with to transfer, but this will cover part of it.
Now, is this transferring into the litigation account? Or is this transferring into council contingency?
No. What the treasurer's done is set up, at least while I was interim, two accounts, one being unbudgeted, so when we paid for something that we didn't have a specific line item for, and the other being the treasurer's accrual account, meaning we're putting it in there, and when we get the full bill, it'll send, it's kind of like the way we used to encumber funds out of accounts for it. But we don't want to put it in the litigation account, because that's going to distort the figure. So in order to keep everything clean, we are putting it in an accrual account, and we'll always have that runoff of, kind of unexpected expenses that came up. Because if you just transfer this all to litigation, it's going to inflate the litigation account, and then you're going to always be saying, well, what's the real amount that we spent? So we're trying to keep it cleaner, so it's easier to follow.
I like that idea.
Kind of catchy accounts, too.
Well, I would move that we approve the transfer of funds from account number 21905268, to accounts 11207980, and an as-yet-determined number for town administrator unbudgeted accounts for Giroux's commission and Connet River Bridge toll litigation.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
We have a request of council approval of transfer of funds from account 1120-5100, town administrator's salary, to account number 1060-5102, building office staff salary, $2,860. Interim town administrator?
Yes, I'm requesting this transfer, because prior town administrator had directed that office to do additional work, and this covers some of the expense that the clerk had in there. She was a little short on her account, anyway, and there were additional overtime authorized without knowing where that was to come from. It also covered, covers part of, the part timer that has been covering for the clerk in there is on vacation, and the time that she was in there covering, including this week, because the clerk is on vacation. So it's just kind of a cleaning up house. There will be ample funds in the town administrator's salary account to cover the administrator through June. There will actually be even funds left in there, so it seemed to be the most likely account to take it from.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds from account 1120-5100, town administrator's salary, to account number 1060-5102, building office staff salary in the amount of $2,860.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Nancy, how much is going to be left in that account? 30?
No.
How much is going to be left in that account?
It's going to be left in the town administrator's account? Well, after we pay the new administrator through June, there'll just be a few thousand.
Two thousand. Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, there wasn't.
But it was just the time between you and...
Yeah. Right. Request council approval of transfer of funds, $1,870 from account 5130-6690, rental maintenance, $1,000 from account 19607533 Municipal Court Computer, $195 from account number 22007156 Audit Services, totaling $3,065, to account 1120-7980, town administrator unbudgeted items to pay for shortfall in fuel system expenses.
Yes, and look at that Municipal Court Computer. Guess what's count that is?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Okay. What I've done is try to get a few little accounts. This is for the system that has been placed at the DPW. He informed that there was going to be a shortfall on this, so I had authorized it under that unbudgeted items, and so now I'm trying to clear that out. So I've just taken little bits from accounts that were left. Denise has agreed with the money from the Audit Service, the Municipal Court Computer, I think we can get through to July without, and then the rental maintenance. Which is? That's the difference from the maintenance truck. So I'm, we're just trying to clear. I know it's getting into littler accounts, but I didn't want to leave anything in that other account.
Nancy, do we know if this is going to cover any, is this the only outstanding balance on this new fuel system that we'll get hit with?
Yes. Yes, the DPW shares here, but yes, this is all he said he was short for. This actually is for the crane. They rented a crane to, I think, move the tanks from the police to the...
Okay.
And this is, the crane rental was 3,000, and then there was a shortfall. Am I right? Steve?
Yeah, we had, we had extended the island, and buy concrete, and steel, and curbing, and all kinds of miscellaneous expenses, and that only represents half the cost. The other half came out of my budget for the items.
You had extra money in your budget?
Yeah.
Well, for this, we did. Had to pay the bill.
We didn't catch that.
So we did. We volunteered that.
Did we talk about some buyback of the old, the spare tank, or that ever?
Oh, yeah, we're still trying to sell that.
Oh, okay.
Look for a buyer.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't got much feedback.
I mean, I don't need one, but...
We're going, trying to go through the same fuel company that did all this work, and they run into people who need tanks, so we're just waiting for someone that needs it. The moving costs are just, we should, how much we had to spend for a crane, so that's prohibitive, you know, the cost of the tank, and just renting cranes and equipment to move it. It's almost tough, you know?
But it's all done now, right?
It's all done. Working, we sent bills out, monthly bills, working like a charm. Fantastic.
Very good.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $1,870 from account 51306690, rental maintenance, and $1,000 from account 19607533 Municipal Court Computer, $195 from account 22007156 Audit Services, totaling $3,065 to account 11207980, town administrator unbudgeted items to pay for the shortfall in fuel system expenses.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I request council approval of transfer of funds, $1,565 from account 1020-6890, council contingency, to account 1120-7980, town administrator unbudgeted items to cover costs for senior center sink required by the Health Department.
I thought you should chip in, too. I guess we did.
I guess we did.
This is the sink that Janice has the Health Department in. Now, she also has to have a plumber and a contractor go in, but there may be funds within the budget in other areas that, you know, work with the town administrator in any of the other accounts.
And this is, this is like a special, like, three-day sinker?
We had to pay it, she ordered it. We had to have it for the Health Department requirement.
So this is just to purchase it?
This was just to purchase it. She's got quotes on three plumbers and a carpenter to put it in. But this is just to purchase the sink.
I'll entertain a motion.
Go for it, Joe. I'll request, I won't request, I will request that we approve the transfer of funds in the amount of $1,565 from account 10206890, council contingency, to account 11207980, town administrator unbudgeted items to cover the cost for the senior center sink that is required by the Health Department.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, before we get to this discussion on the municipal budget for year 2014-15, I want to publicly thank our interim town administrator, Nancy Mello, and our treasurer, Denise Surratt, for all the hard work that they put in working on this budget. The council, as you well know, has spent a lot of hours working on this, but without Nancy's help in monitoring these, these changes, prodding us when we needed it, telling us when we should or shouldn't do something, based on her experiences, and I can't tell you how grateful this council is for all your hard work on this budget. And I hope that the people of the town of Tiverton realize that not only the hard work of the council that went into, in trying to come up with a budget that was fair and equitable for everybody in town, but how much hard work that our interim town administrator and town clerk, who wore both hats, did in putting this budget together. So I'm publicly, and our town treasurer, Denise Surratt, for giving us all those reports that we've never had before. never had before.
All right.
Okay, now we can have a discussion on it. This is terrible, Nancy.
All right. This reflects whatever was done, and I will change that to the grant, yes.
Yeah, yeah, just one minor change on it. It's just location.
And it reflects what was done on Saturday's meeting. And so we had requested, I had sent a email to the fire chief. He's prepared to speak on his budget tonight and is the police chief.
Yeah, the police chief.
Anything I need, he's saying that tonight, tomorrow we get out of here.
Right, late AM.
Oh, don't tell me you're going to pass out more paper.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm a, the email yesterday that I got said that you wanted a report on the current budget, the status of the vacancies and the overtime account, which I've worked on, but tonight I was informed that you also want one going forward. So for next year's, again, that's going to depend, the vacancies depend on who we can get to hire, who we can get to stay, and at what level they come in. So we're looking at, and there's a lot here and I don't expect you to try to even attempt to absorb any of this.
Try us.
Yeah.
I think, Chief, the email also was on the impact of what this budget would be going forward.
Again, this one or next year's budget?
This is the budget.
Because we're blending two together, so that's what I'm trying to figure out.
This is the budget we're working on, yes.
Yeah, 2014-15.
The 2014, again, I, it depends because of the vacancies we currently have. And let me just finish. On the front page, the first cover letter you have for myself is a time synopsis of trying to fill these vacancies, how that's all come about, where I perceive that we're going to go to try to finish up this year and the shortfall that I see coming forward this year. Last week, I was going to put in a request of transfer to try to get some money back into that account from my base salary account, but I was out sick all last week, so that didn't occur. So we didn't make it on time to get it in. Mrs. Mello had also asked where the vacancies were. If you go to the second sheet, which will, the pie chart here, the organizational chart will tell you where staff currently is, and then the following page will show you where the vacancies are coming up.
My question the other day was, minimum staffing is seven.
Is seven.
So is that what we have right now, two, two, and three?
Not on every shift.
Explain that to me.
Wrong.
This, this second flow chart...
The second flow chart tells you right now where my vacancies are.
And this is the organizational chart?
That is the current organizational chart. Denise, I think if you go one more page, each, each shift should have an assignment of eight, but because of the four vacancies, it brings it to seven, which means that any leave whatsoever creates an overtime spot.
That's what I was wondering.
The backup to that is, as you go further in, you'll see the backup, which will give you what the actual shift schedules were, the daily, what we call the daily sheets. Who was working, when they were working, and what they were working at. And again, I have one more, if you'll notice on shift two, about the sixth firefighter down, I'm still just waiting for his...
Waiting for a hire date?
I'm just waiting for the date. He's telling me he's gone. We know he's gone, we know he's been hired, he just doesn't have a start date yet. So all of those together lead us into a problem, but this is a problem. I've tried to give you the correspondence going back into last June, or actually even further back than that, as to when I saw this starting to develop and where we were going forward with it, trying to keep Mr. Gonzalo in the loop of it at the time and where it was going to develop back and forth. Again, we had our hiring list in place. The hiring list comes out, it's a two-fold hiring list. It has a test score on it and it has a psychological component to it. The company does not recommend that we go below the B candidates, but we have gone below that just to try to get candidates to fill these spots. So, but at the same time, we're hiring, East Providence, Providence, Cranston, and Warwick, we're all hiring. So it's the same pool of, pool of candidates across the state that where everybody's pulling from.
So if I'm reading this right, shift three and four, you're always paying overtime? Every one of those? You're paying one man overtime?
Yep, but actually, almost every shift I'm paying overtime on.
Yeah, well, she's...
One, two, three, and four, all four shifts.
Well, technically, shift one, you shouldn't be.
You shouldn't be.
If everyone came in.
If everybody comes in.
Yeah.
There's the problem. We have people out who are on different leave issues, but they still have vacation leave available to them.
But right now, okay, but right now, as long as no one calls in sick or takes vacation...
I love your optimism.
[laughing]
I wish I had the same optimism, but...
No, 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 I just wanted to understand it, but, okay.
We've even tried moving personnel. If I move personnel around, what it does, it just creates another hole and another shift someplace else. There's just not enough warm bodies to plug all the holes. If you go, again, I, if you see the longer graph that's in here, the colored chart, the bigger page that you have, this one here, I tried to draw a comparison because we, one of the questions comes, where does the leave come down? Where does, where is this usage coming in from? The top one is what we did for a seventh-month period, starting July 1 going forward. We took every leave that there was and we put it, placed it into a column to be able to look at it, what were the causes? And I think it's pretty plain to see where the causes are. I thought it was also important that back in 2010, exactly the same situation happened. We did exactly the same thing. Councilor Nelson at that time had requested a leave breakdown, and when I compared the two charts, it was amazing to see the similarities in them. The only difference is the long-term illness that's on the far right-hand side of the 2010. I will say that the following year, and this is where the impact may go forward for next year's budget, and God, please don't hold my feet to the fire on this one. The following year, once we had all staff in, we saved $80,000 in overtime.
Okay.
So I gave you everything that I had as far as, as the leave usages, where the leave comes from. This is all the backup to the, the components that I've put forward to you. Again, going forward, trying to fill the spots, to fill the vacancies themselves becomes a problem because it's, everybody else is hiring at the same time. And the issues that we have discussed, we've done in the synopsis I put forward to you, what we've talked about in exit interviews with, with the staff that has left, their reasons for leaving, and these are the reasons they're giving me. And not my reasons, they're their reasons, so.
Now, explain to me the EMS incentive, because we looked at a five-year average.
Yep.
And you haven't spent more than $68,000.
Okay.
So...
And it, and it took a little digging to find out why the number the way, is the way it is. The first, you remember, we are currently in a new contract and there was no changes in it. The first year of that contract had a change. But you will also remember that the budgeted amount, the administrator at the time did not want to tip his hand and did not budget the full amount that was going into effect that first year into that EMT incentive.
Which is what year would that have been left?
That would, would have been 13, 14.
Okay.
So that number should be, I think, if I remember correctly, 69 and change in there.
Yeah, I do, I do.
But the dollar amounts for the current EMT, or what is this year, but they were put in and that came out of, I believe, if I remember correctly, the future needs account or, he had an account, there was an account that that was put away for, for negotiations. But this has been, this is the second year of that same issue for the EMS incentive. Plus, you also have to remember there were pay raises on top there, too.
But, but isn't that based on, on everybody going, taking the EMS, whatever?
That would be...
Everybody does. Every member of the department gets an EMS incentive.
Right, but that's based on the full complement of people you should have.
Correct.
Okay, which you don't have yet.
Which I don't have right now, but I still had to budget for everybody going forward.
So when you budget, are you assuming they're all going to come in as the paramedic rate?
No, no.
You're not, that's what I was...
There were two basics, 16 paramedics and, what does that leave us, 14 EMT cardiacs.
But you will be hiring five, well, hopefully, being optimistic.
Correct, absolutely, yeah.
Are you hiring those five at paramedic rates? And is that what that number reflects?
I can't answer that one for you as of right now, I have two, the ones I'm looking at right now are at cardiac level, but they haven't completed...
But what does that 92 reflect? That 92, 950?
16 paramedics, 14 cardiacs, two EMTs, so that would mean everybody who's coming in would be at a param, EMT level, EMT cardiac level.
Oh, so you're, okay.
But again, we haven't completed the process because right now I don't, still don't have enough candidates to fill the spots once this other member leaves.
But it's still quite a hike.
Again, but you go back to the original date that that budget went in, it was not budgeted at the full amount for that contract when we signed that contract.
So are you in deficit now, or...
Negative, we are not.
No, you're not.
No. So, that's what, that's what skews, Brent, that's what skews the five-year average. Because the first year of that contract...
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, because the first year of the contract didn't have...
I had to...
Didn't have it in there. That's correct.
Just like it didn't have the pay raises that first year also.
But even last year...
Which was the year that, that was, though. That was the year that that started.
Right, I understand that.
Which shows it, and you also have to remember that some of that stuff was retro-back, and I'd, I'd have to actually look to see how far back retro the EMT balance was for that. But they, there was, we signed a five-year, basically five years of contracts with them, which took us back.
Right.
The number that I, I put in for next year's budget is the number based upon the contract, based upon 16 paramedics, 14 EMT cardiacs, and two basics.
Which would have been the same, you would have had in 12, 13, right?
Yes.
What, what did we spend in 12, 13?
But when I, when, you spent...
Okay, we budgeted 79 and we spent...
Yes, if you, I don't have the current contract in front of me. If you can pull the current contract, I believe July, you'll see there was also an increase in that dollar amount.
But shouldn't this reflect the transfer? What he spent? This should be, this, this should be a clean number, that he really did spend.
You mean, you had the five-year average?
Yeah, I'm looking at it. That's the actual.
That's the actual.
So that is what the transfer and everything you spent, 63.
So June 13th...
June 30th of 2013, you spent $63,585.
Okay.
So that is what the transfers and everything in there? And you're asking for 92, 950?
Correct.
And you really believe that that number is solid?
Absolutely.
But you didn't spend that?
Well, we're going to have to look at the, the contract and then figure it out.
Absolutely.
Because, again, it just, I can see it going up because I know there was increases, you know, factored in, but to jump $30,000, you know, $30,000, $3,000,000...
You know what I'm saying? I'm sure you...
But you also have to remember that in that timeframe, I had four other people that went to paramedic school and came out of paramedic school, which changed the numbers, so I'm not sure that, that original number that I have, again, you asked me to go back two years, I don't know where it was two years ago.
But this is what...
I just know based upon the current contract, the staffing I had at the time we submitted, remember, we worked this budget back in September to put it in, at that current time.
But this is what the treasurer is saying you actually spent.
Right, I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I, I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying, based upon what I have for staffing, proposed staffing, and the contract.
Yeah.
All right, we're, we're going to have to look at that.
Okay.
Because, again, it's, it's a $30,000 swing.
Right.
You know, and then we expect it to increase, but...
Yeah, just the other point of data that I'm just trying to understand, why I asked if you were in deficit now, because what it looks like, our year-to-date actual expenditures are somewhere around $56, $5700 on a monthly basis of what we've spent historically. And so that leaves us with somewhere in the $9,000 for the, the next four months of this fiscal year per month, which is like $34,000. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what a realistic number going forward should look like if, if it, if we're, if we're overshooting it slightly with this 90, 93 or something. And I'm not sure.
Again, Mr. Pelletier, that, that is based upon, again, when we finish this hiring, who I get, that number may change slightly dependent upon the skill level that they come in at.
And Chief, can you remind us optimally when you would, I mean, if everything fell into place, when you would have those five vacancies filled?
I don't think you can read them.
I was hoping I'd have them done six months ago, but that hasn't happened. Again, we're...
I, I guess, before the end of this fiscal year?
I'm hoping.
Into next fiscal year?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping to have the majority amount. The only question may be the last one, when this final individual decides to go to this other department, and then, then we got to get that person trained and in the door.
Okay.
So I may have one vacancy that may drag over. I've already been notified that come July 1, I'm already going to get hit with two more FMLAs for 13 weeks during the summer months.
Now, Bob, you probably didn't have a full complement during this year we're looking at either, which is...
That's why we're going to have...
That's why we're going to really look at it.
A big chunk of money.
But we budget, but when we do, we budget for...
You budget for the full...
We budget for the full complement.
But we're looking at the actual cost.
That's why the actual...
Right, 12, 13, if you...
That very well could be, and that may be the confusion, because I did have one that left in February, then I had another one that left later on in the year.
It probably reflects some of that, but...
Again, I'd have to go back and pull out the transfers from each one of those accounts that, where we, because there was money in some of those accounts at the end of the year, but based upon what I knew I had for staffing, proposed staffing going forward, that was where the $92,000 number came out, based upon skill levels.
Can I ask a slightly different question? So, one of the other things we talked about on Saturday, Chief, was, so five vacancies, in theory, including the firefighters...
That's correct.
Right, and so the, the permanent firefighter's salary line item here, which is coming in at $1,316,862...
That will change slightly, depending upon this, when we, who we get, when we get them. It will change.
And, so, okay, so that's good. So will these five come in at a probationary level?
That's correct.
And so, based on that, the hourly rate would be less, which in theory would cause that number to decrease, social security, so on and so forth...
That's correct.
Down the line.
That's correct.
No way to forecast that for now.
Mr. President, I would just suggest that the fire chief could get those numbers for us for tomorrow night, because you are now at a point where you have to have your final budget by March 8.
Yes.
I'll be away, that won't stop anything from changing, Denise.
You, you didn't hear?
And Mr. Wojcicki will handle it.
You didn't hear? You can't be away.
Yeah. Please, I'll be away.
I will say, that shouldn't be, but again, I could have had those today, but again, I think there was a miscommunication as to what I thought you were really looking for.
Okay, we'll, we'll take those up tomorrow then.
Okay, so you'd like, so let, just let me make sure I'm perfectly clear what you're looking for tomorrow night. You want the base salary numbers going forward for next year?
Nancy.
What else, and you want the EMT?
And we want it wherever it affects any salary account.
Okay.
So if you're coming in...
Yep, longevity.
Right.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, the council will be making the cuts and you'll have to look at them anyway, so, I mean, I would suggest you come forward, join us, it'll help us.
And I don't have a problem with that, I can certainly put that number together. Again, there was a miscommunication as to what you were looking for this evening. So in the day, I worked on what I thought you were looking for.
In addition to those things, what I'm trying to understand is best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, if you fill every one of those positions with the highest qualified, highest tier, highest-paid people you can get in the door, and, and conversely, if you fill it with five probationary officers that are going to make the minimum for X amount of whatever, I want to know those two numbers.
Can I just ask for a little bit more clarification?
Yes.
Because I don't believe I have the ability to offer them anything more than probationary status.
Okay. Then best-case scenario is that.
They still get the EMS on top of that.
That's correct.
EMS incentive on top of.
That's correct.
On top of their probation.
Yes.
What I'm saying is, if you theoretically, and I don't understand all of the operations of how, how EMTs and EMSs and cardiac's and all that, paramedics work, but if presumably there is someone who comes in at a probationary level that has the basic or minimum, or does not have any certification. And then there is someone who theoretically could be a paramedic, which is, I guess, the top of the line, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's a range there that we, we, that's how we're gonna try and forecast that number.
Okay, no, I, I, that's, again, if I understand that, I can certainly do that, that's, I just didn't have that before.
But that number wouldn't change until the probationary period is over, correct? It doesn't, regardless of.
Which, which number?
If you hired somebody who had all the qualifications, they'd still come in at the probationary rate.
They'd come in at a probationary rate, but the EMT, dependent upon their certification level, would be different.
Right, they get the incentive. But then, but their base salary would not change until the probationary period.
That is correct. Unless you have a different thought of how to get people in the door.
Yeah, but, but their base salary would change if they came in probationary as a paramedic.
No.
Well, but they're getting paid in.
The EMS incentive.
The base, the base stays the same.
The base stays the same, but they will be.
That's correct.
Getting the forty-two dollars more a week.
Uh, I think it's fifty-something.
Fifty-something more a week.
Right.
All right, so that kinda changes.
Forty-two dollars, but I don't know how many paramedics are gonna come in at fourteen, ninety an hour.
Well, again, that goes back to that conversation we've been having, that's why I'm saying. I mean, I was hopeful that, and, and you'll see in the correspondence between myself and Mr. Gonzalo, was that I was trying to lure some of the people who in Central Coventry would be losing their jobs. Now, I haven't seen any of the applications that closed Friday, I don't know if we did or not. I think it would be, behoove them to try to come in, I think that would be a good thing for us if, if it can happen, but, I don't know. Again, dollars amount, dollar amounts.
At a minimum, even if you hired them next month, at least three months of this budget, their probationary.
Right.
Oh, twelve months probationary period.
There you go.
Right.
So that.
Eight months or?
Right, so that's what I'm saying, going forward for next year's budget, again, depends on this hiring date, and then going forward, trying to calculate off of that as to where the dollars would end up, because then they would be transferring or changing halfway, halfway through the year at a different rate.
And those are the numbers that we need to see.
Oh, I am too.
Because obviously, if we wanna look at some sort of change in that base probationary, we've gotta know what.
They're definitely, I can tell you right now, there definitely would be a change, but a hundred percent what the dollar amount is not, is gonna be, is gonna be difficult to put a pin on it, but I could give you a rough idea.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I mean, I'd be more than glad to. I took up everybody's time, but thank you.
You're fine, thank you. Nancy, with the changes.
I was hoping that the police chief would have some information on his animal shelter. These were all issues either raised Saturday or raised at the budget committee meeting. This isn't new to.
Mr. President, Saturday we did meet, and Mrs. Mello requested that I provide you with a breakdown of vacation time, sick time, payrolls for two months, which.
That was different than what Bill.
Okay, well, you were given that.
Yes, and he did provide it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that we had.
My vehicle inventory. I do not have any other documents. I did go over the animal control account today.
That was.
It's twenty, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and change. That is how much we pay for them, I've, we requested three thousand dollars. We put down approximately twenty to twenty-five animals a year, which are roughly fifteen dollars per, per animal. And then, plus other, if an animal's struck by a car, or a broken leg, say, and they have to have x-rays, that's not caused to euthanize the animal, they would repair that, that animal, or they would treat that animal, and those would be fees that would be, with the remainder, that twenty-four hundred dollars remaining. That's where we would go into that area of the money. The council wants to, seems it's necessary to cut into that twenty-four hundred dollars, so be it. But we're operating on a tight budget contractually, and there's that little bit of money that's there that we could cut out, thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, it would be safe.
We reduced your request from thirty-three seven.
Correct.
Council reduced your request from thirty-three seven to thirty thousand. So are you saying they could reduce it another three thousand?
That's your call, but I'm just saying, we are operating on twenty-four hundred.
She said another thousand or so, fifteen hundred.
Oh, what did you say? You said a thousand?
I said another three.
No, three would be under our contract level, which is twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven five.
Okay, I'm going by the breakdown on the animal shelter and what was transferred out each year.
Right.
And what was actually expended each year.
Right.
So what was, so, what they're saying is per contract, that's not what we spent every year? Is that what you're saying?
We are saying we don't spend what we're budgeting for the contract.
What I'm telling you now is they have six cages per day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, at twelve twenty-five per cage. Comes out to twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and something dollars.
Twenty-seven, so, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take a thousand off of it.
Tomorrow's meeting.
So, I mean, if you took a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars out of it, I, we could still be in the ballpark, but I did go over it today.
How about if we take two thousand?
Scrapshoot.
Let's compromise and take fifteen hundred.
I'm just saying, it is tight, and we don't know if more animals are gonna be put down or not, or if any animal's gonna be struck by a car and we have to treat them. They've been very good in the past about, if we're overages, they don't, they haven't, they have not been charging us historically.
I mean, I know it's small amounts, but quite frankly, we're now.
I know.
At the end game, and we're taking small amounts out of little accounts that can hardly handle it, and this particular account has transfers out each year, that's why I. But that's fine, we're in agreement.
We are dealing with an unknown, it's not to put excess amounts in there, we're dealing with an unknown that could fluctuate whichever way. For an example, if we, if we put one animal in quarantine, it's five hundred dollars.
Don't do that.
All right, so, so we're gonna reduce the animal shelter recommendation to twenty-eight five?
Yes.
Twenty-eight five?
Twenty-eight five, yes, I'm taking fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else, Chief? Anything else you wanna give us?
You beat me up pretty good Saturday, I think we're all set.
Can I just ask?
And you got us donuts and coffee.
Yeah, and you brought us donuts and coffee and.
Well, that's why we made it to two thousand.
Just, just one other question, and I honestly can't remember if we talked about it, Chief, but while you're up here, the, the code red, should that, should that be a capital expense, or we determined that it was more of an annual?
We picked that around considerably.
I don't think it should be a capital expense.
First of all, the question was whether it should be included in my budget, which I magnanimously said, yes, why not? And, but the, it, it was put in, it's, it is a capital improvement, but it's a service that we purchase yearly.
So it really should be in the.
So it feels like annual operating expense more than anything. That's probably more bookkeeping than anything.
And that is, that is townwide and all of the DPW Fire Department, and we'll be utilizing it as well.
You can add five thousand there.
Thank you, Nancy.
You all right?
I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Now, this budget reflected.
All the changes.
I've still got a few.
Yeah.
Okay. Very small thing, Kate in planning said she was gonna reduce her publications budget by six hundred dollars, something to that effect. By three hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. My question was, that extra three hundred dollars was to split half the cost of the RS means manual with the zoning department? I wanted to know what impact that had on, is that being absorbed into the zoning's department, or are we cutting that out entirely? What, there's obviously some ramification, I know it's only three hundred dollars, but.
Is Kate here?
What happened to Gareth, is he gone? I did, he was here earlier, or maybe it was a vision, okay. Well, that's something to consider, anyway. The other question, the other question we brought up on Saturday was clarification on the tracks for the bulldozer. Did we get clarification on tracks for the bulldozer?
Steve.
Tracks for the bulldozer go round and round.
Let's talk about the bulldozer.
Yeah, every five years in the past, we've been buying a new bulldozer. Two years ago would have been a five-year deadline, we're trying to nurse the two we have through the end of the life of the landfill. And the bottom end, where the rollers and tracks and all that stuff down below, is really worn out, and it has to be replaced, and it's a big money item. If it goes down, we don't have a replacement, and DEM requires us to have, you know, backup on-site, you know. Basically, we need the two dozers going. We have two.
So one of the dozers needs a bottom end?
Yes.
The other dozer has a few more years left on it, or?
Oh, yeah, I think we can nurse it, the expenses on keeping the dozers alive are going up exponentially, because we're really bringing them along, and they're, they're overdue to be, both be replaced.
And we're required to have two of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are they both in use, or is one sitting there waiting for the other one to break?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
But it's a requirement with DEM that you have to have a backup on-site.
Yep.
So which, which one?
Yeah, we bury rubbish every day, and we have to bury it, and we're required to bury it, so we have to have something to bury it with, and we have to have a backup for that, so.
Which, which one of those two are these tracks potentially destined for?
That would be for the one that's now.
The backup one or the active-use one?
Well, they flip-flop. The, the newer one was five years old two years ago, so the older one's probably twelve years old, right? So it's for the twelve-year-old one that we're gonna get, get ready.
And that's gonna be the front line, and the other one's gonna be the back line?
Well, no, no, it'll still be a back line, back line, the old one will still be back line, and the newer one will be the front-line one. But it's still seven years old now, so.
So wait a minute, so we're gonna spend fifty-five thousand dollars on a truck that sits and waits for another one to break?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll go buy a new one for three fifty.
Right. Okay.
So.
I don't know if that's clarification, if that's.
I know, it hurts. It's like, it's like insurance, you know, it's like the snowplows, you need them when you need them, and you don't need them when you don't need them, but you have to have them sitting there, you know, it's tough.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
One more issue, unfortunately, this is going to add to the budget. But I had a meeting today up at the Board of Elections, and I have made the Budget Committee aware of it, as well as the council, that due to the last election cycle and the problems that they've had, they are putting a lot more requirements on it. At any rate, we then had to meet with Bob Kando, the head of the Election Division. And there's a lot of concern that in Tiverton, we only have a part-time Board of Canvas clerk. And I guess some of what came out of this legislative oversight review on the election for the last time, they're trying to take some of the burden off the clerks and see that the Board of Election members are doing this. However, we are running with only a sixteen-hour part-time Board of Canvas, and he actually sent us a letter requesting that by March thirty-first, we tell him how we've, what we're planning with the staffing intentions. So I may have to be requesting whether or not it gets approved, that we move that part-time clerk into a full-time position. It's only the difference of a part-time, because it's, I'm already sharing it with the treasurer. So right now, we have one full-time person. Essentially, it would mean we'd need to hire a part-timer to cover one, and then I'd have it full-time up here, at least through election cycles, because we got a general election this year, and we are doing some of this on a wing and a prayer, they, they've really, they're really outlining a lot more for us, so you need to keep that in mind. I know it's my budget I'll be presenting in, but that Board of Canvas part, you have a say on that part.
Well, would that be a union position?
It is a union position. Right now, I'm sharing the clerk with the treasurer. You know, offhand, I've only thought really more into it lately, what I'm thinking is if that full position was just Board of Canvas, we would have to hire a part-timer for the treasurer's office. I don't, I was trying to think how we would tie this in with a part timer and see if we couldn't just get more hours. But I'm gonna have to at least put the figures in there, so that's gonna be an increase.
So there are more requirements from the state, and then they're also asking us to hire somebody.
Clearly, you can't run elections on sixteen-hour.
No.
Yeah, we've been doing it for a long time.
Yeah, we have been.
I know.
But we are only one, I don't know what, that is still doing that. And he, they were displeased that we're still running like this.
Okay. The other, the other, oh, Sally's got her hand up, but I still have one last line item I wanna talk about.
Let him finish.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, and I know it was only a day and a half ago, but, two days ago, recreation, we were trying to get some clarification on the twelve-thousand-dollar capital, re-sodding the soccer field, say that a few times, then the six-and-a-half-thousand repair, the twelve-thousand, whatever, there's thirty thousand dollars in that account that we don't really know what it's for.
We contacted Gary Rose and asked him to please come tonight, or tomorrow night, if he couldn't make tonight. He has been on vacation last week, and he said he is doing catch-up at work, and he wasn't going to be able to make the night. I did receive some emails, someone here, that was here Saturday, I think her last name was Pimento, is it? Levek, I'm sorry, Levek. And they actually sent me copies of invoices where the soccer league has paid and contributed into these field rehabs and, and things like that. So I do have those copies of that, but honestly, we need Gary Rose.
Yes, we do.
To come. I will again contact him tomorrow, today, most of my day was in Providence, but I will contact him again tomorrow and ask if he could please at least come, we'll take him first and try to get him handled and out of here. He needs to explain.
Yeah, there's.
He has a meeting on Wednesday, still? He has a recreation meeting on Wednesday?
He has a recreation meeting on Wednesday, but what worries me is there's a facilities meeting coming up as well on. March first, where they start to say, you know, the Little League needs this, this, and that, and, and we were really trying to get a handle on some of this beforehand.
Because we, we have operational questions that need answering, and we have.
And the McGeal contract.
The contract, and what this twelve thousand dollars is for, and if we are spending twelve thousand dollars to re-sod the major field that needs most of the maintenance work, are we still need to be spending twelve thousand dollars a year on reseeding fields? You know what I mean? It's kinda, we're not sure.
What I'll suggest is that if he can't make tomorrow night's meeting, that he should send, either give the breakdown, or I think Chris Robeline or John.
Somebody.
Caderro is also on those, I'll, I'll suggest he at least send one of them.
Also on there, agenda for Wednesday is hiring.
Have you also?
That's an important meeting to make, you said you were gonna make it, Denise, because I may not be able to.
I'm gonna try as well.
That's gonna try, I'm getting out of work at seven, I'll rush right here, so I'll give some.
I honestly don't think I can make that one.
I have a meeting in Yamato that night, so.
Um, I'll try to get here.
Is it here, or is it?
No, it's down at the, um, community center.
I will do my best, I mean, I can't promise.
If I can, I will at least send a memo with you, or the administrator would send a memo with you, asking for the breakdowns on this.
Yeah, I'll try to get there.
Have you, I mean, have we, have you relayed the message that the process for hiring someone as to go, okay.
Go to the personnel board.
Thank you. I have no other.
Okay, anyone else on the budget?
Do we have any more info on what the impact of the pension situation is at the state?
No, that's gonna all depend on that settlement, so that could take a while to, you know,
No, that's gonna all depend on that settlement. So, that could take a while to figure out before it gets here. But probably the impact will be next year. We said it was gonna be 169, was it? 149? I'm sorry. Maybe it was 149. I thought it was 169. That would be the impact at Tiverton. If it's as-
Unless they do that amateurization, right? They do the amateurization, then it'll be, what, $5,000 a month or something like, I don't know, $5,000 a quarter or something like that.
But at this point, we don't have enough concrete information on it.
So, tomorrow is a joint meeting of the Budget Committee and the Town Council-
Yes.
Here at 7:00.
Here at 7:00.
Yep.
I will prepare these for the Budget Committee as well.
With all the changes and questions and so forth.
I do have to keep them in red for tomorrow night, only because the Budget Committee is tracking that way as well. When I give them a new one with red, they will go back and-
Have they had any questions thus far that we could prepare for our meeting tomorrow, or is this just gonna be a kind of a fluid? I mean, I know you don't speak for the entire committee, but maybe you can try.
You can try to speak for-
I just wanna make sure if there are any questions that we need to be ready to answer, we're ready to answer.
I think it's just gonna be an opportunity for us to get together and both go over the line items one by one.
I think that's gonna be a good conversation.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
So, if you're interested in anything, whether they want to talk from your life, I mean, on your strictive-
Yes.
We can start it.
Laura wanted to speak about that also, because Laura mentioned it to me the other day.
If that be the case, you know how you've taken some of the capital that are non-recurring, you might consider those or not, but I'm just-
The only other thing I can mention, I'd like to mention is, we may need to reconsider the police pension. I know we reduced it to $800,000. We're only required to put in $700,000. I think we really need to revisit that. If there is a possibility that we have to pay more because of the state deal, then we may need to take out $100,000 from that and maybe reduce the amount and put some in contingency. If you put the $800 in here, that's, you're paying a bill, and it's $800,000. You don't have the option to pay another pension.
Right, but that will not affect this budget. The state pension, it will be next year.
Which is this budget?
1516.
Oh, will it be?
Yeah, it would be 1516.
I thought it was next year.
Yeah, which is 1516.
No. No, it's 1415. We're in 1314.
He knows that.
No, this budget's 1415.
Right.
Yeah.
It won't affect the 1415 budget. That was my understanding. Because, yeah, because the states aren't the same fiscal as we are.
So, it would be-
So, it would be 1516.
Two years from now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm happy with that.
I mean, that was my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I believe that it's the 1516 budget that it will affect, not the 1415.
I would, I would be certainly happy to have that conversation about what the funding level of that account is. But I don't know that we have too much flexibility, but I'm certainly happy to talk about it at any point.
I mean, something that we can look at, Joan, you know, and maybe make a fluid decision for the next budget. I mean, if it does impact us, then we're gonna have to find the funds somewhere anyway. But I think our question was whether or not, whether we were legally obligated at the $800.
No, we're not.
And that was-
We were obligated at 825, and I think the only concern I'm having, and I'm trying to think about the conversation we had about this a week ago or so, and it really took a bit of convincing for me to feel comfortable with reducing it from 825 to 800 based on what our contributions are and what our payroll out is. But I think we have, we may have a little bit of flexibility. I don't know if it's $100,000, but it might be some smaller number.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, the long-term liability is still there. It's just a matter of how long we want it to be.
I'm just so sensitive to the fact that we're so much better off in that private, not private, but our own town municipal fund to put more money in today than not. That, that really is a huge driver in, because our liability, our payroll liability goes up pretty fast in future years, and I'm just concerned that if we, if we just keep up with outpayments, we're not gonna really ever get a handle on this.
Well, the outpayments is around $734,000, and that doesn't take into consideration the 10% that the police, the current police put in, and doesn't take into consideration the income that we're getting on the $6 million. So, I'd feel more comfortable if we reduced it at least another $50,000. Because it'll cover the current cost of $734,000 and with a little flow.
I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know, well, maybe the, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the payroll, the payroll numbers-
I just feel with the long-term open liability that we have, I'm a little leery of reducing anything when it comes to pension at the moment. Because we're not, I mean, we're not even close to our number that we need to be in order to get us up to the 60%.
But we're already at 54%. So, and it was a multi-year plan-
Not 64%.
To get it up to 60%. So-
But that was based on the $800,000.
No, $700,000.
It's based on, yeah, it's based on that.
Do we need that clarification on the state pension, on whether that's 1415 or 1516?
Certainly would inform the conversation.
Because I think, to your point, it feels like a different conversation if that state pension is, obligation is coming due.
There's still two issues. I think this is, we're overfunding this particular line item. And the state pension is a separate issue. I'd feel more comfortable if this was reduced by $500,000. So, I'll make a motion to reduce it-
Five hundred?
Oh, sorry, $50,000.
Jeez.
Well, we could do that, but we'd be in violation of the improvement plan. I'll make a motion to reduce the pension, police pension plan by $50,000 to $750,000.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? We do not. A motion dies.
Like I said, I mean, I'm willing to have the conversation, but not doing math on the back of a napkin. My brain doesn't work that fast, so.
No, I think that's something we should discuss, but I'm very leery about impacting something that we have been underfunding for so long, and just wanna make sure that we're willing to get it up to the 60% according to the plan. So, I think it's a discussion we need to have, but at this point in time, I would not wanna reduce anything at this point in time. Anything else on the budget? Okay, Nancy, you'll have this all to, with all the changes. Thank you.
I did, just for information, I did speak off the, with the union concerning those positions that we were, think you were thinking of changing.
You mean the next item we're moving to?
Okay, next one's interim administrator, item G3.
This is a request to go out to advertise, subject to the funding, of course, for the-
I'm sorry, Nancy, before you go, I'm sorry. Mrs. Black, you had-
Yes, just one question, please. What is the date of the financial calendar?
May 27th.
So, was it 63 days prior that I find it going to happen?
And it has to be into the Budget Committee, but there is also a stipulation that says 73 days before that, the council has to have it to the town administrator, and that date is March 8.
Oh, 73?
I think it's 73 days. Whatever it is, we worked it out. It's March 8.
Yeah.
Because you don't turn it into the-
Town administrator.
Town administrator, and they have to. I don't know why the town administrator needs 10 days between, but that's how it is.
No, I just want to be late on the school committee. That's why I have to.
Yeah.
The side date was like the 16th or 17th. Right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Nancy.
So, this is to advertise for the two, two of the vacant positions we have right now, which is the maintenance foreman and the labor slash custodian slash maintenance. And what I attached to it was the job descriptions I was able to locate at this time, but I thought if you approved this, that the town administrator could review these descriptions, and he may have, you know, additions he wants to add to it, but maybe it could be subject to that.
Yeah, because I think we had just briefly discussed, ensuring that, I guess, some parts of it, the slash labor or whatnot, could do some maintenance, true maintenance work.
True maintenance work.
So, we're looking at that. So, I think it does need to be revised, both of them.
Right. And at this point, we'll discuss with the town administrator where he should be kinda directing some conversation to the union or the labor attorney to work out a few things. I did, they seemed pretty amenable to it. Why they wouldn't be, I don't know, but, because that would take amendments to the contract.
Right.
We also, there was also a discussion, and it pertains to what we plan to do about a vehicle for the maintenance department, as to whether or not the new maintenance director would be required to potentially plow the municipal buildings, parking lots, of which this contract doesn't pertain. So, I mean, we would have to, or this advertisement-
It'd have to be.
It'd have to be.
The police chief is checking into the idea of the costs on any vehicle like that.
Right, the plow, yep.
Right, and the plow. And there's also where in the contract you may want to amend to put the authority, to put the control on those positions.
That's where it will fall, yep.
Yeah. I thought the new administrator might wanna come up to speed first with what the issue was.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I may. Well, I just suggested, I don't know if it's possible that this maintenance foreman have a commercial driver's license, or the ability to get one within six months.
It's in the contract.
Is it in there?
Special requirements validated state operators license with commercial driver's license endorsed.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. I have no issue with advertising, but I think we should wait until we at least clarify what we're advertising for.
You mean the number of hours?
No, and what the position entails.
Okay.
Because if we're going to, you know, a labor slash custodial maintenance, you know, will be a little different than what we have at present.
Those titles come out of the union contract presently. It's just that the maintenance end with the custodian, we want to do more than change the light bulbs. We want them to be able to, you know, help the maintenance foreman put up the sheetrock or change whatever. So, I guess administrator will be-
Are we gonna adjust this, because this is an old job description indicating that he reports to the Department of Public Works?
And I thought, that's what I said. I thought the town administrator might want to-
And that maybe adds some additional tools and equipment instead of mops and phones?
Yeah, I would like to hold off on this, give this to the town administrator at 8:01 a.m. And then continue to the next meeting, just so that we, if we're gonna advertise, I wanna make sure that whoever answers such advertising knows exactly what we're looking for.
And the requirements aren't-
Yeah, talk to the union, see exactly what the wording, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, there are no bids and requests. Town administrator, interim town administrator.
I attended the street committee meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, and they seem to have some concern as to what the council has set for their mission. Now, they have the enabling resolution, but they seem to have some concern over what is their actual charge and what is the council expecting of them. So, they have requested a workshop with the council. Now, I suggested that the March 31st is the next Monday that you have a workshop, but I don't think they wanted to wait that long. I did explain to them that right now, the budget is taking precedence on this. Perhaps you'd want them just to attend a meeting and kinda discuss what their issue was there. I don't, I don't know. They're asking for a workshop. I don't, clear when you'd be able to-
Excuse me. I thought you were gonna get us on the next council agenda. You asked us about how long it was gonna take. We said probably we could have all our questions answered in about 15 minutes. So, you said you were gonna put us on the agenda for the council meeting.
Okay. But I think what Audrey wanted was a workshop and, or just get on an agenda. So, do you wanna handle it during an agenda, or do you wanna wait until you are able to do a workshop? It's really, shouldn't be that long. And I did ask that they send the issues ahead of time. They had a couple of issues for the solicitor and-
Yeah, I would put it on the next council.
Just put it on the next council agenda? That's fine.
Nancy, March 31st, I have the planning board and town council meeting, great workshop.
Right, but it's your next Monday, right.
Right, so, we won't have, yeah.
Well, our next meeting is, what, mid-March?
March 10th.
March 10th.
24th is the meeting.
Right. Yep, okay. I'll notice them. Oh, you don't have to notice them. Mr. Robell is on the committee.
The, the questions are, I presume, more nuanced than what their, their charter, or not chartered, but enabling, okay.
Resolution.
I'll make sure a copy of the enabling resolution is in the back of the- Go ahead.
Council announcements, comments, and questions. Oh, that's wonderful. Town Solicitor.
Thank you. Chairman, the first thing I'd like to do is ask if you would move item Executive Session 5-1 up to become the first item of K, an open session?
I move that we change the order of closing Executive Session number 5-1 Solicitor Acquisition of Real Property for Public Purposes Stonebridge Gas Station to K1, or to before K1.
We have a motion. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is, with great pleasure, that I am able, I'm able to announce that we are basically there as far as the acquisition of what's known as the Stonebridge Gas Station, or also the Seaside Gas Station, the property at the Stonebridge Abutment owned by the Cotillo Family Trust. We've been working on this for quite a long time. I've been working on it for quite a long time. And we now have all the pieces into place. The closing actually was held in escrow a while ago. We have all the pieces into place, and we'll be recording tomorrow morning. Just so that the public is aware of the details, and we'll release the documents afterwards, but the sales price was $400,000. The closing costs are $16,313, and that includes the survey, and it includes a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental testing of the property. And then we estimate another $40,000 plus or minus to remove the underground storage tanks that are there. They're clean, they're not leaking, they've been tested. They're double-walled tanks. The areas in, between the tanks have been tested and found clean, and at the seller's expense, the last seven inches of product were removed from the tanks. The condition of DEM allowing a temporary con closure certificate is that they be removed within six months of the closing. I don't know if Mr. Bellucci can, maybe we can find, if we get, if we get somebody who's interested in the tank, we might have several tanks that people would want. But otherwise, I mean, we do have the money allowed for that. We have some estimates from, Bob Hoffman has been the environmental consultant for the town.
And we also have two bids that have gone out, our price quotes. So, there's two certified, they have to be state-certified contractors for tank removals. So, we have two prices, and you should, someone should have them, I imagine, already.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, that's a total cost of about $456,000. On the funding side, this is where the work has been, there's no, there's no current cost out of any operating budget to the taxpayers of Tiverton. We have $200,000 from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation. The funding for the Stonebridge Abutment project, the repair of the abutment project, was increased, actually by $204,000, and they also found some money from an old congressional earmark. So, we were able to get $200,000 from that, and that actually has been the holdup. We were waiting for the signed written agreement from DOT confirming that they were authorizing the use of that, those funds from that total $2.6 million. were authorizing the use of that, those funds from that total 2.6 million dollars, that the 200,000 could be used for the, towards the purchase of this lot. We received a grant from the Department of Environmental Management, Mr. James mentioned earlier, about with Open Space, up to $208,552. That's a 50% grant, so we'll be essentially using all of that. And then, Open Space funds from the dedicated account with Open Space had authorized $100,000, with up to $50,000 to be, of that be used for the enhancement of the property with the removal of the tank. So, as you can see, we've got $508,000 in funding and $456,000 in costs. So, I, I don't anticipate us using more than about half of the Open Space funds at this time. The plan is to, as I said, remove the underground storage tanks within the next six months, ideally sooner rather than later before the next hurricane season, get them out of there, the flood plain. And I talked to Kate Michaud, she is in the process of applying to Roger Williams University, has a community partnership program, and trying to get them involved with leading a study of uses for the property. Because our original plans for the Stonebridge Abutment were rather simple because we didn't have this piece in the middle, and try to get them to lead a study of what could be used. The terms of the D E M recreation easement would allow it to be used for recreational purposes. If you want to use that as a new building for the beach with bathhouses, concession stands, kayak rentals, community sales center, whatever, those things are all possibilities, or even the demolition of the building. But for the moment, we'd leave the building there while that was going on. The only urgent thing is the tank removal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think most of us agree that conserving our waterfront and getting a piece of that back is a great thing for the town of Tiverton. Our seashore is a very precious part of this town, and anytime we're unable to get it back, I think it behooves the town and, and it makes us a better place for everyone. And I, I hope everyone is happy that we have done our best to better our town by this small little piece of property.
Now, Mr. Roderick, could I make a comment as well?
Absolutely.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Tights, who did an excellent job in negotiating this for the town. But I, I think I also wanted to point this out as an example of a situation where there really is no conspiracy going on when we don't reveal every detail of something that's happening in the town. We tried to assure you over the last few months that we were required, for various reasons, not to reveal the details of the negotiations that were going on. It wasn't that we were trying to hide something. It wasn't that there was some terrible dark secret that we would only reveal at the bitter end. We thought we were accomplishing something for the town. I agree with Ed that we in fact have accomplished something. I don't think we would want to be in a situation 10 or 15 years from now where we were saying to ourselves, "Gods, why didn't we get that gas station when we had a chance to get the gas station?" But I think that this is an example of, you know, keep in mind on some of these items, we're really not trying to hide things from people. We really are not. I think everybody would agree now that you know the details, that these details are not bad news. But the, the reality was, we were not supposed to reveal the details of those negotiations when they were going on. That was a part of the requirement of the purchase and sale agreement. Right, thank you.
And if I may just expand on that, and in fact, the agreement, the original deadline was back in December, and we were basically depending on the goodwill of the seller to continually extend it while we were working with D O T. And so, obviously, we didn't want it to become public and have someone show up and offer more money when they didn't, were no longer bound after we'd gone and spent the money on the environmental studies and so forth. And I would finally, I think, like to mention my thanks to Stephen and William Cotillo, who are the trustees of the Cotillo Family Trust, and they were very good to graciously extend this continuously. And they, they wanted to do right for their family and their, their children, but they also, they wanted to see this as something for the town of Tiverton as well. So, my thanks to them.
And I give our town thanks to them also. Moving on.
Okay. Next item is old K-1 Stafford Pond fishing tournament letters. Just for your information, this is the list of the people who received permits from D E M last year for fishing tournaments on Stafford Pond, and I've sent letters to all of them along with the statute and the application, and you've just got one of the letters, but they were all sent the same letter. And I have not received any responses yet, but those just went out last week.
That's good.
Any questions?
Item two?
Item two. This was an amended resolution establishing the ad hoc, it was originally called the Land Use Procedural, the Land Use Committee. This came out of the September 2012 workshop on zoning enforcement, and it was the ad, the Ad Hoc Land Use Procedural Improvements Committee. I tried to rename it a little bit, Land Use Procedures and Enforcement Committee, both to give it a catchy acronym at the direction of the town administrator. But it also is more, it's, well, it's also more accurately affecting what we're talking about. Because we're not just talking about changing how things are written, but how they're enforced as well. And I think you have a red line copy there as well, which is essentially just changing the name and changing the dates. I will say the clerk had, had expressed an interest in being on this committee, but then thought better of it, but you, you might want to amend it now to add her to the committee. But that's, that's all this is, is just a update of this and get us going on that.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please. To amend the resolution as indicated.
I want to take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The question I have, sorry, the question I have is, have we already populated the membership of this organization? Or, I don't even remember, why don't I remember this?
It doesn't, it's all town staff. It's all.
Right.
It's all bought, it's all people there. No, the chair of the planning board and the chair of the zoning board haven't indicated their designation yet. I don't remember if the town council did or did not.
I'm going to be honest with you, I don't even remember this.
I think.
I don't think. I don't know.
We pulled minutes on this, and there was no mention of appointing that.
I, I can't remember when, because I do remember discussing this, and I may have brought it up at that time, and if I did, I apologize for repeating myself. But I know we're trying to ensure that the makeup of this ad hoc committee brings some level of professional experience to the table here, but I'm wondering if there's value, if others think that there is value in trying to also put some members of the public into this?
I, I think when we had that discussion.
Did we? Oh, I remember now.
Remember that?
Yep.
And I think at, at the time, we thought because we had public hearings and so forth, that we would not.
Okay.
Because again, it's, it's only the ad hoc committee, you know, to, you know, look at what has been put forth.
Yeah, and as long as we're going to have public hearings and there's an opportunity for the public to weigh in on any sort of recommendations, because at the end of the day, you know, many of these things, you know, are going to be used by the public. You know, those are the end users, and we're going to want to make sure that they're as user-friendly as possible here, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Yep.
All of those in favor? Motion carries.
I mean, if we get to a point where we do actually populate the membership of this committee, and, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I would happily be the designated member of the town council.
I, I would be more than happy to appoint you.
I'm sure you would.
Yes.
Before I change my mind.
Next week.
Next, Andy?
Next item, K-3 is a memo regarding shooting ranges, also known as shooting galleries under the state of Rhode Island. This is a, a two, this is part one of a two-part issue. There is a question of whether we have an illegal shooting gallery in the town. That, that's a separate issue. This is the first issue about whether, what the regulations are and what the license is. And, and we've actually asked, apparently by one of the proprietors of this possibly illegal establishment now, what would they need to do if they wanted to get licensed? So, what I've done is tried to give you a relatively brief synopsis of what the law is. State law on this goes back well over a century lumping shooting galleries and bowling alleys together. No, they, they, these are considered nuisance.
What, you shoot your pin?
No, I, I think. I think these were considered somewhat nuisances.
Yeah, less than desirable places.
Less than desirable uses, and the town councils were given the authority.
Bowling alley?
And, and bigger the bowling alley, to regulate. And even the language, regulate and suppress these uses. They're, they're not really consistent because the language doesn't carry forward over all of it, so that's why I've given you both of it. But there's also a tax on it and a fine for having it without the use. And, and so, it would appear to me that you have the authority. You have the authority to license it if you want, or not to. Likewise, your state, your town ordinance, we've just got this passing language about target shooting at any bona fide range or club as designated by the council, but nothing further. So, I think at this point, and you don't have to do anything tonight, this is for your information. I've set forth also the provisions if someone wanted to try to do this, you basically have to do a couple of things. The zoning ordinance would have to be amended to provide a, a place for them, might require a comprehensive plan amendment as well, I'm not sure. And then you'd also have to essentially enact an ordinance providing for that, the licensing and what standards and so forth you're going to apply. So, I wanted to give you this information to get you going on that.
What about this target shooting on private property by the property owner or guests that written permission of the property owner, dot, dot, dot?
Okay. Well, I, we're getting into a separate issue, which is a question of whether particular use is allowed or not, and, but I would say, just talking in general terms.
Yeah, hypothetically.
Hypothetically, if somebody.
This is my property, and these are all my guests, and.
That's right. And, and that is allowed. If you want to have a party on your property and you meet the other requirements about being 500 feet away and so forth, and you want to have a party with target shooting on your land, and you're not, that's okay. My view, however, is if you were charging money to someone, that is not.
That is not your guest.
That is not having a permission and so forth what this is intended. If there's any money or consideration changing hands for the privilege of shooting, then that becomes a business, that becomes one of these illegal shooting galleries with a fine of $200 for the first offense and $500 for each subsequent offense.
So.
Can they have pies?
Okay, if you would, for clarification, your saying this goes back a hundred years.
In the state.
Are we talking shooting galleries as in carnival shooting galleries, with the bowling alleys, or this is by definition, I mean.
They don't, no, they, they don't restrict them at all to, to with carnivals. Other building or other enclosure in any city or town in the state where firearms are used without a license from the duly constituted licensing authority of the city or town.
Okay, well, I would understand that to be an enclosed structure, i.e., a, a shooting gallery and a carnival-type atmosphere, not where we're speaking of a range with 500-foot clearance and.
Okay. Well, I, I think.
I'm just trying to say, we don't want to get ourselves into a.
Right, and I'm, and I'm not opining as to any particular use. So, that's, I want to make that clear. I'm not opining to any particular property in the town. I haven't talked to the chief yet or the zoning official going further on that issue. That's the application of specific facts to the law, but I wanted to get the law out there. People were asking about it. I wanted to get the law out there first.
Okay.
If I may, Chief.
I'm sorry.
But a, a shooting gallery and a carnival, is that a true firearm?
Sure.
It shows a special.
Moves a projectile. Absolutely, by definition, yes.
Yeah, it is.
But what I, referring to not the name specifically anyone, I did go to visit a site today and make some observations and, but that's, I just don't want to confuse the two of something where shooting galleries by definition and enclosed buildings, so. But of course, we'll go from here, and there's always state law of.
Well, it says, Chief, it says, or other enclosure. So, I'm not sure whether that, to me, that doesn't limit it to building, but I think that's what we need to discuss and, and look at. And that's why I, I preface this at the beginning by saying it, and I say it again. I'm not making an opinion about any particular use of the town at this point. I just wanted to give you the law, and it's not, as usual in Rhode Island, it's not crystal clear. But I do think that the context of this and the general sections where it is and the powers to regulate them with bowling alleys and billiard tables and so forth, I think it, I think it is broader than just with a carnival.
Yeah, really. I would lean the other way, where they start to encluster a group, billiards tables and bowling alleys. It makes a hell of a scenario when you've got guys with guns and bowling balls and.
I think, I don't think they were talking about the same uses at the same place. We'll talk about it, please. Thank you very much.
I mean, we have, we have the law clarified now.
Yes.
We have the law clarified now, so I'm interested in making sure that trying to gather facts to apply to the law.
Right.
Is actually taking place, or there are plans to.
Yes, that's the next step, and report to you at the next council meeting on that.
Great. Are there any reports of illegal bowling alleys in town?
Not to my, not to my knowledge, not yet.
I have had a person contact me several times who wants to come before the council, who was requesting the council approval for a indoor firing range. Is that right? Yes. Indoor firing range. Is that what it's called? Yes. However, I've informed him, we don't have an ordinance covering it or anything like that, but he may very well come before to see if the council entertains something like that, then he, because it'd be a lot of amendments going forward.
So, so does this mean that the Tiverton Ron Gun Club, because it has an enclosed range, needs a license?
No, it's before.
They're deemed to be an illegal non-conforming use. They existed.
Well, that's land use, but this is licensing. So, does that mean that they should be licensed? If, if it applies to an enclosed range?
I think even EPA would come into this as far as OSHA, for if someone's shooting indoors with the lead particles, et cetera, it all would be, it would, that itself might nullify any, someone trying to get it into a range. So, there's a, a gamut of things that you're going to have to cross before you can just issue a license.
I believe there's regulations even with the NRA to be a bona fide shooting range. You have to have, I think some of those things regulated also, I believe.
Absolutely.
You have to register with the NRA, and have, and there's stipulations on top of that for certifications.
But, I don't know, Joe, I, I do think you bring up a valid point, though, is should they be licensed?
I'm just asking the question. This is referring to licensing.
I, I think it's, I think it's a good question, too, and I hadn't considered it yet, and I'll look at that as part of the overall situation.
Well, I think now that we have some general idea, which we didn't have before, we're going to have to look at.
That's correct. I mean, we never, we never had a question before to complain about it, whether they did or should or should not have the license, but in looking at it, it's definitely a good question.
I hate to kill, kill. I hate to be a dead horse, but can you, we get a little bit more, I, I'm sort of, this shooting gallery thing sounds way too much like, you know, 1930s Boardwalk empire kind of, you know, Las Vegas type of arrangement. It doesn't, it doesn't ring modern gun range, you know, kind of type of thing. Is, there's no other reference for licensing for any type of discharge of firearms for clubs or anything like that besides these shooting galleries?
No, there's not, there's nothing else in state law that refers to it, and there's nothing else either in case law other than, other than a shooting gallery in the sense of a place where people shoot drugs. That's the only court case. So, checked all. So checked all, looking for court cases about shooting galleries as well. So there really isn't much other than that. Clearly, it does, it does hark back to that.
It is very strange.
Right. And the earlier case from, you know, 1939 was dealing with, you know.
An amusement.
City license to show a movie, too. These were all considered part of these amusements. I don't think anyone has really looked at it since then on the state level, which is not unusual.
What is a box ball alley?
You've never played box ball? It's all the rage.
I don't know.
Sorry.
I think it's the same thing. Don't forget, we give, we give our license, the vitrine licenses actually, if you look at the state law, it's under the category, it's vitrine and oyster house licenses. That's what the category is. And then, as we've talked about in the past, we give a secondhand and junk dealer's license to someone, even if they're selling $10,000 French antiques.
Yep.
So it's what the terminology is, doesn't necessarily control.
Taxi cabs and hackney drivers.
Okay. Next item.
Next item, number four, is not, it's not really a town item, but apparently it's a concern, so I want to bring it up. You've got, it's a copy of a recent Supreme Court decision. We've had this issue before of questions about private property owners and what happens when you have a dispute that overlaps, two private property owners have a dispute about where their property boundary is. And because of that, it brings the town into, if someone's built something, is this in violation, is it actually over the line of the property? Or on a lesser scale, is it in violation of the yard setbacks requirements? And this is one case that was here in the town. It went to Superior Court and all the way up to Supreme Court, Donna Banville versus Peter Brennan at all. Ms. Banville prevailed that, in fact, her version of the survey in the property lines was correct and that Mr. Brennan had encroached on it. And the Supreme Court upheld the Superior Court decision with that finding. And now there are, there are two issues. One is the issue about privately, and privately, Ms. Banville has the power to go and enforce this. In order to take an appeal, Mr. Brennan apparently had to post a bond of $50,000, so with the Supreme Court, so there's, she can act against that bond if the action's not taken. And also, now that the town does have a definitive finding, the town can also cite and move for the violation of the structures as well, with the violation to that way. In general, not even general, very specifically, the courts have held repeatedly that it's not for the towns, whether it be the zoning enforcement officer or even the zoning board in a hearing to decide who owns property. Only the Superior Court can decide who is the real owner of property. So many times, we're forced to wait. If there is a dispute, goes to the courts, we're forced to wait until the court. So this is one of those cases that has gone all the way to the bitter end.
So is the question whether or not we intervene or not intervene, but for, take action towards enforcing?
No, I mean, I don't think it's a question. I think we will.
Think we will, okay.
Yeah, we will. We've received this, provided it, and we're aware of it now, and we will proceed with enforcement on it. We were not, we're not a party to this court case at all, but now that there's a definitive decision as to the property line, we will proceed.
Now, the town isn't liable for, if you read the case details, it does talk about Ms. Banville sending, sending a registered letter to the zoning official regarding her engineering study. And still the permit in the building was built.
That's correct. Again, it's not for the zoning official. If one person says, "This is my property," and the other person says, "My property," it's not the zoning official to decide that question of ownership. That's a question.
That's not a question of if he should decide their ownership, it's whether or not there should be a permit until the issue could be settled between those two parties.
Well, well, actually.
That's what it pertains to.
Okay, but, but there is. But if a permit is issued, I mean, there are requirements in the building permit code that the permit be issued within a certain number of days, the building official has to act on it. And so the town can be liable, if the town refuses to issue a permit, the town can be liable to that party as well. So I know, I don't think there's any liability to the town here. The court, this case doesn't reveal where it was, but it does not appear that an appeal was taken to the zoning board of the issuance of these, of the building permit. That would have created an automatic stay of the building permit if it had been done. But again, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Peter Ojiro, representing the zoning board, but I don't, this, most of my knowledge of it comes from this decision as well, and there's no indication. I think it would be here if it was in the travel of the case. It was a private action of one party of another against the Superior Court. If someone has an issue with a building permit, the proper procedural appeal, and I think we've dealt with this with another struc-, we actually have dealt with this issue of another structure on a property line question. The proper mechanism is to appeal to the, appeal the decision of the building official to issue that permit on a timely basis to the zoning board. The very appeal to the zoning board by law acts as an automatic stay of the construction until after the zoning board rules. So that would be where the town would have the action. But without that, if there's a private suit, likewise, as part of the private suit, a judge can issue a stay. And if a judge issues a stay, obviously, the town would abide by that stay. But I don't see where the town has any liability on this one. It's an unfortunate disagreement between two property owners. And as I read between the lines, it's, you know, it concerns property that was subdivided without really knowing incorrectly the beginning, the back, before both of the current property owners were there. And it's, it is, it is unfortunate that the construction went on, that one party decided not to wait, but that's, that's why we have the court, and they awarded damages as well. So that's, that's the way the situation's been resolved.
Mr. President, if I may. I'm sorry, I missed the comments and questions. Mr. Tights brought up a situation I might have a question on, is, was the motion filed for March for the other issue that you just mentioned? McLaughlin case.
You need it for the April hearing day. Yeah, I don't know.
It's supposed to be for March. Because you had said in January, you missed it for February. You're going to file for a motion to be, to go into a motion in court for March.
Yes. I'm not sure, because we are waiting for the, we have to get the official order from the Supreme Court denying the appeal. I'm not sure about that, whether it has or not. I'm not sure of the scheduling of that. I know we're moving forward on it, I don't know the date yet. I was on vacation last week, so I don't know what the date on that is.
Well, this, in January, you had mentioned that you had missed the date to file a motion for February to.
I didn't say that I missed the date.
Yeah, you did.
I said that the timing, it was impossible to file because of the date, the fact that Newport County Superior Court has motion calendar only once a month. So it wasn't the fact that I missed the date, it was the fact that when the decision came out, it was after the time when one could file to get on the next motion day.
So that was not done this month either?
I don't know if it's been done yet.
Okay.
That's my answer to it for you.
Town clerk.
The only issue I have is, we received permission from the Auditor General's office on the RFP for the audit. It has to be approved first from the Audit General's office. And we just received that Friday after the agenda was done. So we are kind of in a time bind, but I guess I'll just have to put it on the next agenda to go out to RFP on the audit services. It just came in after the fact, but Denise wanted me to mention it.
Okay. Okay.
If we have any meeting that we can catch, I'll put it on as a special and.
Shouldn't be one.
Okay. Mr. Lambert.
I move that we go into a closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law. Item number two, Open Space Commission, Chapter 42, Section 465A5, Ray acquisition of real property for public purposes.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
And continuing closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A1, Ray interim town administrator personnel performance, specifically Mr. Gareth Ames, code enforcement officer, notice given.
Nancy, notice given.
Yes, notice was given, and he signed he would like to do an executive.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor?
And stay in closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law, Chapter 42, Section 465A2, Ray.